Let's call this regular town council meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
You may. Counselor Bragden.
Present.
Counselor Danforth.
Here.
Chair DuMay.
Here.
Counselor Goli.
Here.
Counselor Higgins.
Here.
Counselor Madore.
Here.
Counselor Pelletier.
Here.
Well, I'd like to welcome everybody here today. If you please stand and uncover and join us in the present meeting. What we're going to do is we're going to be in the states of America and it's really Republican. One nation under God, and even small, but it only really gets out of the small. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can I get the approval of the minutes? Oh. I try to. Thank you. Any discussion by the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I just have one correction. At the end of the meeting, it would have been five oh adjournment. I had to leave about five minutes before the end of it.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Danforth. Any discussion by the public? Back to the council. Can we get a vote, please? All votes in favor. Looks like it's unanimous. Unfinished business. Ordinance number three, twenty twenty two. I have Counselor Madore read that ordinance, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, amended order number three dash twenty twenty two. Providing for amendments and updates in chapter one twenty five zoning subsection one twenty five dash forty one. Schedule of uses and subsection one twenty five dash fifty dimensional requirement code of the town of Melanoke. Be ordained by the Town Council of Melanoke in council, town council assembled as the Melanoke Code, Chapter one twenty five zoning. Uh, subsection one twenty five, uh, fifty dimensional requirements be amended per the attached dependence. It is further ordered that the ordinance would take effect thirty days after enactment.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Motion was by Counselor Madore, seconded by Counselor Goli. Can I get discussion from the council?
Down to the public? Oh, no. No, I was just gonna say, I, I, I'm glad that this was amended and I'm glad we have it back. And, uh, I'm glad that the section until such time as the planning board has a chance to meet again. Which hopefully will be tomorrow night as, as not have the mobile home part of, uh, ordinance units. I'm glad that they got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Madore. And you are correct. This is only of the trailer park portion of that ordinance. Any other counsel comment? Counselor Goli?
Um, just to clarify, this removes the mobile home portion of it. This only deals with dimensional requirements.
Aye.
Thank you for that clarification, Counselor Madore.
Yep.
You good? Down to the public. Do we have anybody to speak on this? Please announce yourself.
Scott Levitt, three thirty Congress Street.
I'm gonna face the mind and forth with you.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, Scott Levitt, three thirty Congress Street. Uh, last, the last time we met, I, uh, wanted to know the progress, the process of where it started to where it is now. With the information that I've got, I don't think that this uh, change should even got to the town council. And, uh, I just have one question for Mr. Pelletier, if I can, is was the legislation that you sent me, any part of this? Uh, the copy of legislation that I sent you was the impetus to planning board getting enough of this issue. Right, so it's connected. Yes, it's what started this. Okay. Twice. I just wanted that to, uh-
Mr. Levitt.
Yes.
Just for, I just had some clarity. Uh, when you address the council, address the council and then I'll direct.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I hope that's just all new to me, so.
Me too.
Okay. We'll learn, we'll, we'll learn together. So, uh, that answers my question to the thing, but, uh-
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't get to hear your answer, Counselor Goli. Could you please repeat that?
Certainly. Chair DuMay. Uh, when that legislation was passed by the state, it impacted our zoning. And so, we, as a council, remanded the question. The, uh, planning board, you are zone in compliance with what the state law was, as well as what what improvements can we make to improve housing availability.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, I started my process. I emailed all the council. I, uh, except you, because I know you wasn't, and Mr. Higgins was not involved in the beginning of this. And Mr. Jameson. And I appreciate all you guys reply, at least some of you replied to me. And I wish it would be, even if you said no, that it showed the respect to me, the reaching out to you. And, uh, I talked to Mr. Jameson because I wanted to look at the map and everything that went with it. But he said we don't have a code enforcement officer. So I'm looking and I'm saying, wow, I said, I've got to figure this, but he showed me where some of the places came back to a certain district region there that is involved in this. But also, uh, I, I went in and I looked at the votes and the vote for this, uh, thing was, uh, sixty eight, forty three, no. I mean, sixty eight, yes, forty three, no, thirty six absent. But then I went down through everything and all this planning and rezoning and everything, heights and all that was done by Southport and Bangor, all the big cities. There wasn't too many small town representative vote this down. Then I started looking and I'm saying, well, I said, I know the town has its own code. But then I specifically looked at the code of the state of Maine for changes on zoning, because this involves the whole community. Not just one, the whole community. So, uh, I went in and I looked at the zoning ordinance for, uh, the state of Maine complementing this, the municipal, municipality in, uh, state of being legislature title thirty, immiscibility in counties, part two, sub part six A. Planning and land regulations, chapter one eighty seven, planning and land use regulations, sub chapter three, land and use regulations. Author five two, zoned audience number eight, conditional and contract rezoning, C. Which, which is, uh, with the state talking about the zoning in that red, municipality reviewing off authority shall conduct the public hearing before any pub property is rezoned under this subsection. Notice of this hearing must be posted in a municipal office at least thirteen days before the public hearing. Notice must be, also be published at least two times in the newspaper and have in general circulation in the municipality. Then the date of the first publication must be at least seven days before the hearing. And this is a, this is the part, because we're talking about the whole community. And we know that the whole community, and don't look at the website, we know the whole community don't read the paper. So notice must be also be sent to owners or owners of property to be rezoned into the owners of the all property of, uh, betting. The property to be rezoned at the owner's last known address. Notice also must be sent to the public drinking water supplier if the area to be rezoned is within its source water protection area. This notice must be contain a, a copy of the proposed conditions and restrictions with a map indicating the property to be rezoned. So I, at one point, I'm looking and I'm saying we're talking about a whole community. We're not talking about part of the community or section of the community where we get notices. But by state law and state legislature. If you're rezoning the whole thing, it should notices should be sent out to everybody on the, in the community, whi- which I know is impossible, but I'm just looking at the state legislatures uh, copy of the rezoning, what has to be done to notify the public.
Thank you, Mr. Madore.
I'm not done, but I'm just, I know Mr. Goli has a question, so do you want?
I thought you were finished, so you-
No, 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 go. He finished.
Well, I continue.
You know, because like I said, I, I email me a law you and I, and I, I had to get down to the bones. I had to scrape the bones.
So, so your concern on that portion?
That portion is strictly on-
I still have an understanding. It's strictly on public notice.
Right, on that part.
Right.
Okay, uh-
Continue.
Now I'm gonna go to the planning board. The other day I'm gonna read this, so I'm, uh- The other day, I finally got to watch the planning board meeting on June eighth, two thousand twenty two. While listening to the questions between Charlie Sharani and the champ, chairperson Flaro, is it?
Twenty Flaro.
Okay, about the changes to the zoning ordinance for Melanoke. It surprised me at, as Mr. Pelletier said at the last meeting, that I had fallen on deaf ears. Here are some factors on the June eighth, two thousand two meeting. Charlie asked Mr. Flaro about if he had any agenda meeting. Mr. Flaro said, I have a format about the meeting sent out by email that was on April twelfth and twenty seventh. That's going back when it first begun, because it first begun, somebody had the idea, I figured around March before it got to the April twelfth. Mr. Sharani was interested about the new businesses, the business. Mr. Flaro answered that the public hearing will be held to review comments from the public concerns on the proposed changes Melanoke zoning ordinance. Which will allow opportunity choices to RD in the community. Charlie then said he did not want any misunderstanding about the community as a whole. This involves the whole town, which Mr. Flaro said, then said that the summary was supposed to be in the town paper, but never got that far. He said, it was on the town website. Now I might be misunderstanding from the meeting in Melanoke audience. But how are the town people going to know? I thought it was a fact to get the word out of this issue in paper. So, if you have a chance to read, to go back and watch this tape on June eighth, you'll find what I'm saying. I only brought this up because there's a lot more to it on that June eighth. And, and yet, the planning board passed it without putting in the paper. So the only way the public could know is through the town website. And as I said, not everybody looks at that website. I can see the notices every week that you guys print. You know, but it was never printed. So on the June eighth, where he, uh, said was no public comment, how could there be a public comment? People in the town didn't know. If they, they looked at the website, they would know. But they didn't know. And also I'm just getting the paper here. That it was, this is talking about, this was the amazing eleventh meeting that was conducted, that was supposed to send all this information out. So public could realize what's going on June eighth. So, uh, I looked at your code for the planning board. And I'm sorry for the delay. But then the planning board is supposed to go by the state law according to the code. I'm not talking about the, the board, I'm talking about the planning board. Said in there that it's supposed to follow the rules of the state law. And the state law has it that it's supposed to and be in the paper to notify the public, but it wasn't.
You said that, you said that.
You know, in, uh, and another thing I, uh, looked at is the code enforcement officer in the proposal that you guys have read that you guys have looked at. And, uh, I'm asking you, because you, you're, you're at the beginning, I know, you're, you're right sliced reading there. But there's everything on this proposal kosher to what you guys want to pass. Because I think you might have to look at it again, see if it is. Because there's some discrepancies in it. That if you pass it, there's one zone that ain't gonna be changed, the no to yes. Because the code enforcement officer did not put it down in writing. And if I recall, if we're doing a contract, we want everything right.
Absolutely.
You know, but this is not right.
So, Mr. Levitt.
So, I want to allow, uh, the councils to, to respond to your comment. Do you have anything else that you could add to?
Or should we sum it up?
Okay, let me, uh- Okay, the one I'm talking about is, would be, excuse me, because I can't read that good far away. This is a multi, multi-family dwelling, two-family duplex under R two column to be changed from N to Y. But according to this it's already, you got a yes to it. The one that you were supposed to look at and find out is RD. RD's the ones that's supposed to be changed. Not the, not the R two. And I might be wrong, but looking at this and the discrepancy on some of it, and I'm not gonna tell you all of it. Cause you guys know what you're doing. You know? And like I said, I'm opposed to this. And I know from the planning board stages that right now, it was not done in the process it should be. But that's up to you guys. You, you guys, uh, got the vote on it and see if it does, but to me it should go back to the code officer to correct the mis, mis stuff that's in here, the discrepancies that's in here. Because I've looked it over and there's discretion. But I, like I said, I'm not code officer. I'm not planning board, I'm not the town council. And as I told you outside, I spent a hundred and twenty hours on this. A hundred and twenty hours. Three hundred pages. I talked to this one, talked to that one, emailed this one, emailed that one. And I was pretty shocked that even emailing the counselors that they did not have a clue on where this started, where it started back in almost a month. And nobody could give me any answer. And I, and I know I emailed you when I told you, hey, you know, Mr. Higgins the same way.
Yep.
You know, that you, you don't know from the process of the thing, because it's been nine months. And like I said, we're talking, we're talking laid in board in state by the state of Maine. It's supposed to be done by the state of Maine law on your code, because I looked at the code of Melanoke too. And it's supposed to be represented by the state law in, in the, uh, and plus the, uh, publicly for a whole community to just look at a little piece and find out what's this all about. Cause I've had a lot of people since the Lincoln news come out, to come out and say, we didn't know this, we didn't know that. And I'm talking about twenty five, thirty people. So somewhere along the process, we've got to change it and get it right. Or else, uh, we're gonna vote things in that, you know, that, that's voted. Because if you guys voted this, then RD couldn't change. But now, I think it's gotta go back to the code enforcement officer, which we don't have to make the corrections in this before somebody really looks and say, after you pass it, come back and say, hey, I got you.
Alright, so with that, and I thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor.
We're gonna let some, uh, councillors, uh, have some feedback. Counselor Goli.
Well, I give Mr. Levitt her, someone to another meeting of ours. Uh, it seems that the primary argument of yours is improper process. Um, you mentioned how we should know that a lot of people don't read the paper or look at the website. I personally take issue with that. We have begged for years to have people participate in our process in every possible way we can. Aside from showing up door to door and asking people to come. So, it seems to me generally um, that people show up with few exceptions only because there's something they're upset about. Otherwise, people don't come. And it's unfortunate, and I know you understand that. You're obviously here for the same reason. You've had opinions before this that you've expressed publicly without having attended meetings or talked to any of us. So I think you understand that fully well. Um, with that being said, though, um, our town clerk is primarily responsible for, um, hosting all of these public notices. And I know that she has a bulk of experience in this and does everything by the book. Would you mind speaking to, um, these claims that it was not done properly?
I don't mind responding. I wish I would have had a phone call. Um, I could have looked into it for you before. Um, you wasting, not wasting, but taking many hours of your time. Um, Anthony does typically go by the book, um, with the public notices. I'm the one who has to send them out and I do tab him in those notifications when they are sent for the publication in the paper. Um, I'm most certain, but I can't guarantee at this moment, I don't have the paperwork or my laptop in front of me to, to view um, that, but I most certainly can come back at a later date with that information for you when it was posted and, and not just posted on the website, but we do post it in all locations and entrances of the municipal building, sidewalk board, um, as well as in the local paper, cause it is in our charter, um, to do so. I also will note that Tony shared concerns back prior this prior year that there has been zero involvement, even with all the publications of the ads for public notice um, at any planning board meeting. And if that has that it was overwhelming to him that it was zero, um, uh, community involvement with such a change in the zoning, so, um, that is just one note that came to me that I remember conceding and, and conversation on the phone, so. I if we could have a two-minute recess, I can go look, but I really don't want to be put on the spot either to have to try to find it in a matter of a moment. Because I, we, we do, I can keep copies of the ads that are posted in the paper.
Yeah, and another thing, like I said, it's
there's not a dialogue back and forth.
Okay, okay.
So, have you finished, Daniel?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Goli?
Thank you. So just to wrap up my, uh, response. Um, I'm generally in favor of um, changing the ordinance to allow for more development. It's not drastic to change that we're looking at. I understand that, um, not much has been developed in a very long time here. And as a result of that, any change might be shocking to people. Especially if you're the landowner of budding that development. Um, it will be a big change. Um, but being that, um, in my view, the suggested changes to the ordinance uh, within the ordinance are not drastically changing the character or nature of the neighborhoods, they're minor adjustments. Um, I don't have an issue with doing these types of changes to invite more development in a town that clearly has been asking the council, um, to address these types of issues, to allow for more development. Um, we, we've had, um, a lot of pressure from the public, rightfully so, to do all that we can to be business friendly and to invite development and to grow the town. Um, this is one of those things in my view that can do that. If there are discrepancies in how it was done, or if it was not, uh, properly presented to the council, that's another issue. Um, but I just want to be clear that I think this type of change in ordinance, um, is acceptable and not drastically different than what is currently written in our zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Goli. Counselor Madore?
Thank you, Mr. Goli. Can I hear you? I'm on you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to ask right now that the, uh, the council, uh, grant the request of the, of town clerk to be able to try to go down and say, have a five-minute break to go ahead and possibly retrieve the information necessary to, uh, relay or answer some of, uh, Mr. Levitt's concern, whether or not the proper process as far as, uh, public notices and that, where we've gone, have gone through your office to, uh-
If they if they were, then yes, I would be able to my hands on it.
Do we have a, uh, a five-minute recess?
Motion to adjourn for fifteen minutes.
So, second.
I have a vote on motion on the floor, please. The motion's unanimous. We're gonna adjourn for fifteen minutes. Do a lot, Ms. Slatman to do her research. Thank you.
All the other prior public um, planning board meetings, not the public hearings, but the meetings themselves. Um, with the minutes, if. Mr. Levitt wants to take a look at any can, or I can make photocopies later on, but just. On there, also posted on our website, but I wanted at least share the.
All minutes of the meeting? Oh, for June eighth?
Yeah.
No, I don't, like I said.
I brought up, what I was saying is I brought up the agendas and all the notices um, of who was in attendance. Um, at those prior meetings before he requested to have public notice.
No.
For the public hearings, which as you can see the email that I submitted to you. Does have the communications of Tony sending it to me, forwarding it to. Um, with the request to have it published on the May twenty-sixth and June second editions. At Town Regional News, as are per usual ad size, uh, phone and so forth, so I just want to give that to you.
Thank you, Diana. So have you given that to Mr. Levitt?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. So, any other counsel comment? Counselor Goldie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as suspected, it does appear that things were done correctly. I appreciate our town clerk for looking into that for us and. Especially during a meeting to go down and do that very quickly. It's very appreciated. Um, as the only concerns I heard were those of the technicality really, on how this was. Published to the public. Um, and being that it was done correctly in my eyes, um, I don't see any issue with. Voting in favor of this amended ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Goldie. Counselor Madore, did you have anything to add?
I, I just wanted to make sure that we had clarification that the proper steps were taken, as per usual, by our town clerk. To uh, put uh, publication in the local news. For uh, notification of the meeting, and also that uh. Opportunities were available for uh, you know, questions for the public to be addressed to the code enforcement officer. Uh. That, you know, this, e- everything that was supposed to be done for the June eighth meeting. Uh, that addressed these, these changes was done and done properly. Uh, seeing that, um. I, I, I. Other than the fact that, you know, and and I have never, in time that I have been in Illinois. Ever had a time where a, a notification was sent. Or delivered in each and every mailbox in town about any change that would happen. Even in the heyday of Great Northern. Uh. To let them know about any changes, you know, that this, that were public changes for the municipality. Uh, so, I, I don't see where that, that part of that is, is relevant at the stage, so. Uh, I, along with Counselor Goldie, I, I. I see nothing to convince me that I should change my, my thought on. Going ahead and supporting the ordinance. Thank you.
Counselor Madore, any other counselor on this specific topic?
Yeah.
Counselor Kelpin.
Speaking to the others, you said. Citizen uh, Levitt brought up. Uh, I've been on the count, on, I don't know, prior to my uh, council. Ten or some thirty years. And totally understand. Uh, Tony's position and then probably thinking ahead not to put in the paper. But uh, because a lot of those. But because a lot of those changes, what people just don't show. As for me, is objection to the community. Small town, look at the community. You know, having this change in this not that drastic, death buildings that are that high. Given the critical need for additional housing and restrictions, small sites of all the lots in these zones. The only place they can go is up, create more space for people to rent or live in. So, you know, given that. I think, you know. The planning board did a, who did the limits on this review? And if there is some. Item that is not quite right, it's a living document. Change it down the road. Probably it's a problem. So I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Colton. We are still actually in public comment, so does anybody else have public comment?
Chairman, councillor Higgins, Ed Candor. Councillor Higgins? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lovett, I do know that you have a planning board meeting tomorrow night. I would highly recommend that you go. And voice your thoughts there as well. I mean, that one has been advertised and posted. But that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Councillor Higgins. Mr. Leyden. Please approach the mic and announce yourself, please.
David Leyden, three forty-one Congress. I'm on the corner of Congress in Spring. I'm not directly affected probably by this building except maybe an increase in traffic. What I have to say now, you've heard from Mr. Lovett. I sympathize with him. This, like I say, I should have probably have said this months ago. I'm late to the game. I'll say this tomorrow at the planning board meetings. I look at it as a, in a personal way. In other words, I would, what I'm going to say to the planning board is. Put yourself in Mr. Levitt's house. It's your house, okay? You're the one that's going to be back. Look, going into your backyard, you're going to be looking up at that thirty-five, forty-foot wall. And it's not across the road. There's no road. It's right there, okay? There'll be apartments there. They'll be looking down at your backyard. Your deck, you know, your pool, whatever is in your backyard. That's a real negative effect, it seems to me, on the quality of life. It really is, and I sympathize with him. And I think each person has to look at it and say, what if I were there? What if I were there? And if, and if you wouldn't like that, if you thought that'd be too much of a burden. Then how would you put that burden on someone else? That's what I'll be saying tomorrow night. I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leyden. Councillor Goldie?
I just want to respond to that personally. Say that at least for myself, and I'm sure the council as well, has considered that. This is not necessarily a personal issue, but one of a larger overall zoning issue which has been already spoken to. That issue that you just presented of the building with people looking into a lot would have existed in our current zoning. This is a very minor adjustment to that to allow other developments to take place. But that experience of change that you're speaking to of seeing a larger building where they can look into your property. Where there would be more parking and more traffic potentially. The current zoning allows for that right now. This is a very minor adjustment. Yes, it might feel a lot more major to someone who's abutting it. But in terms of what's already existing on the books, it is not a drastic change. So my response to that would be, although I can certainly empathize. The nature of that zoning allows for that type of use already. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Goldie. Any other councillor?
The rest want to go there?
Of course, Mr. Leyden.
Is the zoning where this, the link is going to be built, is that the same as the zone? Where Mr. Levitt lives? Or is it, it's different, isn't it? I think I heard you mention that, councillor. I would be more in favor of changing that zone. To residential. So that neither this large building or any large building could be built there.
And my response, Mr. Chairman, would be, as has been suggested already, speak to the planning board about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goldie. Thank you, Mr. Leyden. Any other person from the, from the, try to make it brief, Mr. Lovett.
I'm sorry. I just want to.
I'm going to go to Sandy after Mr. Lovett.
First of all, as Paul of the Diane put you in that position, that the board had a check out. But the thing is, if you, you looked at my aspect and looked at the June eighth. Meeting, you'd find out where he said. That it was not in the newspaper. So that's what I went by, and I apologize to the board for probably being wrong. But I'm just going by the research that I did. And as far as, as far as the. Notification to the, to the state legislature about notifying things. I, I will be looking into that through the state and. I just say that I'm opposed to this. And it's not the difference between the height, because there is, because some buildings. You put at forty feet, and this building is going to be thirty-six, so there's no way they can build that high up. But I real, I really appreciate, Mr. Goldie, I. Appreciate you saying, which is true, that we don't take the public. Knowledge till it affects us. And I'm guilty as sin as that. But usually I write an editorial, but I solely apologize this. Board for doing, for misunderstanding. What was going on and truly put Miss, Miss Diane in that position because I didn't mean to even get, but it is nice to know that. Where she invited me that if I have questions in that, that I could reach out to her. And I just want to say it, I do appreciate this board and for the work they've done. But I still oppose it and whatever happens, it couldn't happen, but. I really thank you for my time because I know I took a lot out.
We appreciate you too, Mr. Lovett. Any other person from the public? Sandy, Sandy?
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. And it's not specifically regarding this, my comment is. I agree with one comment that Mr. Goldie made, and that is. That the town bends over backwards to make sure that the people in this town know about meetings. People don't need to be spoon-fed. If you know there's a meeting every two weeks, all you've got to do is either come to the meeting. Or zoom the meeting. It's well-publicized. Right now, I'm not able to come because I can't see after dark. However, many, many meetings. Mr. Dumey and I were the only people. In sitting there, and it doesn't look to me like there's very many people there tonight either. People want to complain after the fact instead of being there participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Anybody else on the front? Saying none back to the council. Councillor Braggan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, I just want to say thank you for, for coming to the meeting and addressing your concerns. Ultimately. We do work for you guys and citizens, and you raising those concerns, this is a valid concern. You didn't bring it up after the point or publish an editorial after you raised it beforehand, and I do really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Braggan. Anybody else? Comfortable moving to a vote? All those in favor? If the vote is unanimous. Will we go to order number two seventy-two, twenty twenty-two? Approval of the B-line. Could I please have councillor Braggan reason of order?
Order number two seventy-two dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of the B-line Incorporated franchise agreement. It is ordered that the town council hereby approve the cable television franchise agreement with E-line Incorporated, a copy of which is attached and made a permanent part of the town's record. Per the terms and conditions contained therein, the agreement will be effective from October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two through October twenty-seventh, twenty thirty-two. If approved today with a single ten-year renewal option subject to the mutual agreement of the party.
Motion three by councillor Braggan, second by councillor Goldie. Councillor Braggan, you have any discussion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was unfortunately not able to attend the last meeting, however, we. Did have a very eye-opening, right, that's my opening information. That of which I thought Cat TV was attached to this, which it is not, so I am now in favor of this agreement. I'll let the other councillors speak to their concerns, but the concerns that I did have have been nullified. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Braggan. Councillor Madore?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I was very pleased with the response that B-line and their attorneys. Did inform me, town manager. To address some of the concerns we had as far as exclusivity and other issues involving this. I thought those answers alleviated a lot of my concerns. And I have no, I have no problem with moving forward on this agreement, but I do appreciate. The expedience in which B-line was able to respond to concerns going forward, and I thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Madore. Any other council comment? That is a public. Saying none back to the council. We're good to move to a vote. I have all those in favor. Vote is unanimous. Like to thank the representatives from B-line for also joining us on Zoom. And with that, I'd like to move to the town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As usual, this report was submitted in advance. This particular report contains a lot of information. I will. Give some highlights as I work my way through it. I will not be reading it in its entirety, but I highly suggest that. Everybody go right to millinocket.org where it's posted to be. Up to date on the entirety of the report. So dating back to the beginning of November. Want to. Offer congratulations to the newly elected officials here in the council at the county level. I see Mr. Marshall in the back. Congratulations, sir. And those on the school board as well. With our town clerk needing to take a step back this year from that process. Wanted to recognize our newly deputized clerk Amber Carney, as well as our tax collector and clerk Sharon Seer, who really stepped up. To the plate to lead the efforts on a clean and successful election here in Millinocket. We are incredibly proud of their work. And the team that they led. That the execution of the two thousand twenty-two election. I'd also like to especially recognize election warden Mike, Michael Kite. He's been with it. For a number of years now and is a tremendous asset to, to the local election, so offer him. Very well rewarded thanks. I am in the, I'm currently in negotiation of our lease with the court. I'm having discussions with the state representative around that. I am. Free. Open for. How lucrative that will be in the end. We are both new to our positions at this point and recognize that. This lease has not been addressed since nineteen ninety-eight. So there's, there's some outdated pieces to it, certainly financially, so. More to come there, but. Just wanted to make note that that conversation is in progress. I know that came up around. The budget meetings last spring. Recycling is up and running at our transfer site. I have. Been there several times since that was started back up. I have seen quite a lot of cardboard continuing to go in the hopper. My, my three-year-old son and I go each Saturday. And, you know, while I'm there, I, I start, sprung up conversations with other people bringing, bringing their boxes in and, and. Let them know, make sure they know that, that we do have the opportunity to recycle that material now. It's alarming how many people have not heard that yet. So we want to continue to encourage community members to recycle. I would ask that we consider spending a small amount of money to get a rather large sign. For the recycling building as plain and simple as big red letters would say, we are open. You know, it, it will be eye-catching and will certainly help that word spread. The fact of the matter is that. Transfer, the transportation and. Process to take care of the waste stream from the hopper itself is increasing exponentially in price. And we have. We can either continue to spend more and more and more to process the waste. You know, for sending it to Perk and wherever it goes, or we can recycle the materials and actually. Bring in revenue from it. So cost more money, make more money. That's the decision of our community, but we, we really hope that. That message is heard loud and clear, so we, I very much encourage everyone to. Make full advantage of our recycling facility now that it's back up and running here in Millinocket. The elevator in this municipal building is back operational after a month of being down between. Parts and available staffing and. An ever-so-aging elevator. We were, we were down for about a month and. When the technicians were able to finally make it here. It took them a majority of a day to rig and, and create panels with new equipment, talking to old equipment and. It's a, it's a critical resource and piece of infrastructure to have in our building. So I plan to bring a couple of proposals for. Both modernization and replacement of that. Elevator within the month of December. I'm waiting on one more. Quote to, to bring to the council. We do have several funding options that we will be looking at. Most appropriate. That would be our local American Rescue Plan Act funding that will. That would be able to cover the cost. We also have a, an interested party that. Is willing to invest a substantial amount of matching funds to help us install that. The total cost, depending on which option, I'm expecting to be between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars. And worth every penny. At the request of the council, I have met with Mr. Steve Gardner. During installation of security cameras in the park brush pile in the cemetery. He is working out several options for us to take into consideration. We. We have a variety of locations with a variety of resources available to them, so some have power, some don't, some have internet access, some don't. And there are several options for each, so he's going to create a package or a suite of. Opportunities for us to choose from, and then we will bring that to the council for consideration, but. Overall, it was a project I was very glad to be asked to. Approach because we certainly could use the extra eyes around. Our town. I did meet recently with our town treasurer, school superintendent and school business manager. For an up-to-year. uh for an up to year, up to Boston screen for an uh year-to-date budget update. We plan at our December eighth council meeting to bring mid-year budget updates from both the town and the school. Uh, and then moving forward, we will be producing those um reports and presenting them to the council uh on a quarter of the day. The work of the ski tow is coming along. In preparation for the upcoming season, uh we've had our public works crew over there to um cut away brush and hanging um branches and things over the over the trail. They've moved rocks. They've they've really kind of widened that space back out and and made it a a safer, more usable run for this season. Um, so we we thank you for that. That's a little outside of your everyday workload, uh but they did a great job over there. The goal still remains to install a lift uh with a small heated uh building. He did lose the contest we were in for the initial funding for that, um but our community initiative director has a couple of other tricks up our sleeve, and we're feeling still very strongly that we can have that completed by next winter. I'm I'm actually very honored to have been asked uh to host a session here in Milonocket for the uh this year's Institute for Civic Leadership class. I'm a recent alum of that um class. I was a member of the Catalan class, and that is most often referred to as the best class ever to have participated in I C L. But I I digress. The yeah, in later in January, we will host um the I C L class that's offered by the Maine Development Foundation. Um, and they will be coming to Milonocket to learn more about real life successes in strategic planning, community building, uh partnerships and uh coming together for a common goal around economic development. For that session, um I'll be joined with our partners from our Kataden and Laban Act and Public Health Involved, um as well as this Deb Brown Tree at the Department of Higher Ed Center. And several local participants, including Council Danforth, uh who was a student in that class this year. Uh, so that's a, that's a, that's a big deal to have um to have a an educational group wanting to 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 come to Milonocket to learn about these items as they're producing, uh you know, leaders for our state. Uh, so I'm I'm very, very glad to be invited to to help with that process. Um, and then, you know, in a recent press release in November um of this year, November twenty first, um our Kataden announced um collaborative development of a sustainable forest products campus uh and transportation corridor uh connecting the One North Industrial site to um uh from Milonocket to Searsport. Uh, so that's some, that's some incredible news for our area. Um, this potential forest product campus uh will be anchored anchored by a wood pellet facility um and supported by the upgraded and expanded rail infrastructure um that the State of Maine Department of Transit takes all all backing. It's a very large investment and it'll be, it'll be great for our town, our key. So we wish them, you know, all of the congratulations and appreciate their partnership and all of that work. Uh, I am including some department updates tonight. Within Public Works, uh we do have the refurbished truck bed back from Pellet Gear Manufacturing. It was uh it was it was really a great opportunity to have that work done locally and uh if you remember the budget conversations, uh we took a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill and condensed it to about uh thirty thousand dollars uh having that work done creatively and locally. Uh, that was a huge savings on the taxpayer's block. So great to have that resource nearby. Uh, even with a few new operators uh in the plow trucks, uh the first snowstorm uh was great. Uh, you know, the the new drivers are learning the ropes of those big rigs pretty quickly. I hear from outgoing and incoming department head there that that they're just doing an excellent job. That same crew also recently jumped to action pretty quickly on some uh very bizarre, but um uh pretty intense vandalism uh over on uh Station Road, on the bridge on Station Road leading out um to the big barn over there. Um, I want to show you. I'm going to screen share in the meeting quickly here. I want to show you the work that they did over there. So this first picture. I can't explain to you how it happened. Uh, I don't, I don't really know, to be honest. Uh, but you'll see that the concrete was busted out uh from the sidewalk area. This rebar is bent at, you know, a ninety-degree angle, um creating a pretty hazardous and unsafe zone. So our public works crew jumped in with a creative solution, uh built up some some forms around it, and they were able to pour in some concrete. They straightened out that rebar. And in the end, we have a newly constructed wall on that, on that bridge. So uh another created resourceful solution. You know, just right here by our local crew. Appreciate them and all their effort over there. Um, over at the airport, um the transmission that made the front page of the newspaper over the economic development announcement, which I'll never understand. The transmission is in, the truck has been dropped off to have that uh work done. Uh, so we're happy to have that going. I know that um Jeff's life would be a whole lot harder uh if we weren't able to use that at the airport. So appreciate the support on getting that work done. Uh, it's a necessary piece of equipment. Uh, we were able to update his internet connection over there at the airport. Um, we had discovered that it was just far too slow to to handle, especially with some technology upgrades over there. So uh we were able to uh get in and and switch a provider and and get a uh quicker internet connection so that he could functionally uh get through his administrative work that needed to be done over there. Um, so the town treasurer reports that our uh main revenue sharing receipt so far very strong. Uh, we're coming in maybe even beyond goal here. To date this year, we've received a little over six hundred and thirty-eight thousand out of the thirteen uh one point three million that's included in our budget. Uh, that's about forty-nine percent, and that was uh the total included in our budget was less than the total um expected from the state. So I think we're going to be looking very uh very well now. In the world of wastewater, that facility just runs incredibly well. We all know that. The issue is that we continue to have specific densities of of our population who are plugging the system with um wipes and paper towels and grease and plastics and Q-tips. Um, we can't do that. This, we speak about it constantly. If it continues, we may have no other choice than to increase the rate to cover all of the additional work that has to go into sending our crew into the sewers to unclog these incredibly disgusting clods. Uh, it's a very real thing, and it needs to stop. The only other option is to charge more for the service. Um, so we hope that members in our community hear that loud and clear. Please do not flush anything in your toilets unless it's toilet paper. Flushable wipes are not flushable. I'm going to jump into community initiatives. Um, Amber has submitted several grants recently. One is um in an effort to replace the turnout gear for our firefighters. Uh, that was the Stephen and Town King Foundation. Also uh submitted to um our first application to the Community Resilience Partnership, uh that is for efficiency in heat pumps. She has, in partnership with um Council Goldie and um Brittany Gruder, um had applied to the Main Service Fellows. Um, the goal was to have a long-term intern at the airport to um work on some land use planning, uh kind of help us come up with with a solid plan on how to approach development of the um airport land. Uh, there's a lot of developable land there um as well as learning uh airport operations. So that's a great opportunity there. We feel very strong about their application. Uh, she also in partnership with um Ransom Consulting, um has had an incredible track record working with our Kataden, getting brownfield funding, the EPA. So Amber had submitted an EPA brownfield uh grant, which um this is the town's second attempt at that specific uh property. It's racking property over here on Roostic Avenue. Um, so we're very hopeful that will uh and and feel very confident at this point around our chances of being awarded that funding. So lots of, lots of more updates and good news to come on that. That brings us down to fire, ambulance, public health, a lot of great work going on there, uh conducting fire drills in the school, uh saving lives, um collaborating with the uh Red Cross. And uh working to help the advisory committee for Region Three uh on their firefighter and EMS program. That being said, um aside from the attached uh police report and update from Milonocket Memorial Library, I would like to take this opportunity um to introduce Council to our new assistant fire chief back here sitting next to Chief Malcolm. This is um this is John Cody, comes from the county. Uh, and we are very excited to have him on the team. He has an incredible resume and lots of great experience. Um, we're happy to see him uh grow into this role and 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 transition as as our fearless leader uh takes the next six months uh to prepare himself for the rest of it. So thank you for coming, John. Would you like to say hi to the group?
Good day, evening, everyone. I'm honored to be here. Uh, excited to be here.
Can you even address please?
I did not. Yeah. No, excited to be here. I look forward to working with each one of you and uh, you know, bringing the fire department into you know, a new role, you know, working with, working with the current chief. You know, and uh he's ready, you know, for when he slowly, you know, works his way out and I'm gonna, you know, hoping to bring a lot forward that I can offer, you know, to the department and also to the community. So uh, you know, anything I can do to help out, please reach out and uh more than happy to help you guys. So thank you for having me.
Uh, that that concludes my report for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions or.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm going to uh normally I would defer to the council first. But I'm going to take this opportunity. There's a bunch of good stuff in there. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll let them speak to that. I'd like to move to the back page of the police report. That's the really the only way that I'm going to get what I'm going to say and and it's going to be a hard, hard conversation to have. But we have, in the police report, um several drug infections, and also we've had a lot of people in our community reach out to, I know specifically Council Braden and a few in my life uh reached out to me and and wished for for the council at some capacity to to speak on the drug epidemic that we're having in this town currently as we speak. So I will speak for myself and I'll let anybody else on the council speak on behalf of those requests from those citizens um in this report. I'll keep it brief. We have a very bad drug epidemic going on in this past week or two. I know it's been going on and on, but this past week has been multiple, multiple deaths. And we really feel for those community members and those family members, those uh friends and loved ones that we have. And we really need to uh express to the people out there that um really need to protect each other. If you see something going on, please say something. If you need help with your addiction, please reach out. Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, hospital, reach out, talk to somebody. Uh, your life really matters. So um with that, I'm going to defer to the rest of the council members. Council Higgins, do you have anything to say? Council Dan? Sorry, Matt? Nope, anything on the managers report.
Okay, leaving uh where you left off. Um, one of the comments that was made to me by a citizen of the council has no idea what's going on with the drug epidemic. That is entirely false. Uh, we all have friends and family in the community, and we do see it daily. I have a friend that died last night. Um, we all have that issue. Um, and it it impacts all of us, not just you guys. So we are aware, we do question when these things happen. Um, but a lot of these questions that we are asked is what's going on? We are not the police. We do not know. A lot of those issues are still under investigation because they're so new. Um, so those that have asked what is going on, um the answer is we are unsure. Um, we are aware that there is a quote-unquote bad batch in our area, and it has killed a lot of people. But again, I would refer anybody to the police department for any questions regarding the cases that are in town. As per the actual report, I'm happy to see the update on the cameras. Um, obviously, it raised a lot of concerns with that, Mr. Manager. Um, so I'm happy to see that that's moving forward. Um, congratulations to the Milonocket Police Department under K nine grant for thirty thousand dollars. Um, I'm really, really, really happy to see that. Um, and I'm also happy to see that the fourth of them has a filtration system empty. Um, other than that, that's all I have.
Council Madore? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm going to go last first here and address what other people have already talked about. That is uh drug problem within not just the community of Milonocket, though that's where it gets home most for us, but for the entire state. People are dying at an alarming rate in all states. Big and small. Uh, they are. We're, we're losing our our children. We're losing our friends, our family, our acquaintances. And it's a tragedy each and every time it happens. Saying that, you cannot, or you can applaud on social media the police department when they do have a drug arrest within the community and chastise them the next time there is a fatality. They are doing the best they can do given the circumstances. As Council Braden has already pointed out, we now know that there is a batch of drugs that is highly lethal, that unfortunately has made its way into Milonocket. I know that our police department is working diligently to try to I know that our police department is working diligently to try to find where it's come from, who has it, and bring them to justice before the next person falls. I support our police department in their efforts. I support the families of those who have lost them. I think that there is no greater, especially when it's a child, there is no greater loss for a parent than to outlive the child. And I cannot imagine grief that comes with it. I would like to say patience is, is something we need. Action is something that's been taken. Results are something sometimes that are hard to have, buying. But just know that our police department, this council, and the people who serve on it are working as hard as they can to try to come up with solutions. And we are aware, more so than I can tell you we are aware. And I'll leave it at that. Now, moving back to the rest of the manager's report. I am in favor of replacing the elevator within the school. It is, what we have is antiquated and I don't think the repairs that would be done to it to get it moved would be a stopgap method and just postponing the eventual needs to replace the elevator. I think it needs to be done sooner than later. I think it's not only very important to, you know, and a good example is we have, we have a counselor who depends on the elevator, but we also have a court up here. And they need the elevator as well for people that need to get to court and things. So it is, it's, I think it's time that the elevator needs to be replaced. I'm glad that along with Council Bragden too, that security cameras are gonna be looked at for our parks and brush pile cemetery. I am anxious to see what the options are and I think it's about time to have it done. It's been brought up many times in the past previous councils. My question on the skeetoe, this manager. What if anything can we do if we, if public works and that are putting the time in, we're getting it ready, try to have, especially the sliding hill and that? What can we do to keep snowmobiles off the sliding hill and off the skeetoe? So that we know that the kids that are gonna slide over there and that snowboard can do it safely? Is there anything that we can do to prohibit or keep snowmobiles from using that as part of a poorly conceived YouTube video?
I think what you're referring to is a, is a is a small amount of offenders overall. I do recognize that it's, that it's an issue. I can say I end up spending a lot of time over there with my children throughout the winter. And the past couple with the reroute of the trail, that's pretty well signed. I have not experienced snowmobiles coming across the bottom of the hill or even up and downhill. I've seen tracks, so I know it happens. But my assumption is that it happens at night or when nobody's in that area. I think that we could look into placing some barricades. Not sure of the logistics on that, but I'm willing to have a conversation with our public works director on something we might be able to do. Reroute of the snowmobile trail that goes through there and now takes it down around the back of softball field and is very well signed. I know that the Timber Cruises are well aware of that issue, so I'm going to have a conversation with them as well to see if there's something else that we can do from there.
Thank you very much. The Arkatten Press Release, great news. Good things are coming to our community. I want to thank Arkatten for their continued efforts to revitalize the economy of the town of Millenock. And I just waiting for the first bundle of shovel break ground. That would be the big thing. As far as the constantly continually reminding people not to flush things down their toilets didn't intend to be flushed down their toilet. Is there any way we can find or the public works to view? Is there specific areas within the community, this is happening more so than others, that we could kind of focus on, you know, the people within that area causing, or is this simply everywhere?
There's certainly some presence of it every, I give like a mic so that we can just talk back and forth now. There is evidence of that throughout our town. However, most most often and most severely clogged has, has been the area of Iron Bridge Road heading out to the pines. That is the area that is most affected by this right now.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time back to anybody else who wants to talk about this.
Thank you. Council Madore? Got a hand up? Council Palatea? I'd certainly agree with all the statements played in front of the problem. And comments about the manager's report, I would like to just really thank the manager for such a good report and details it is. And kudos to the departments that are really going above and beyond to cause safety measures in-house work. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council Palatea. Council Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'll start off too with, I guess probably just a very emotional comment. I just found out before our council meeting about the numerous deaths that have occurred recently, just locally and in town, and it's just it's just so sad for me to hear and learn about that. In my role for the hospital, I do convene a coalition, the Kataden Response Network for some assistance. And we meet monthly and we talk about these things. We talk about prevention. We talk about treatment and recovery. Nobody has the answers. Now, we come together and share resources. And I think it's very appropriate and long overdue. You know, we touch on it at the council level, at the municipal level. Somehow we need to figure out what to do to stop this. I say stop, stop the deaths. And there, there are some actions that can be taken. You know, such as, okay, we need more people to carry NACIA. It needs to be readily available because every life is worth living, is important to save. I know there is some fatigue out there around the providers that are constantly using backhand to bring people back to life, but we all have to adopt that attitude because recovery is real. We have, you know, we have a large recovery community here locally. And every person matters. So we need to think about things on, in the line of recovery. Also treatment and prevention. I think one of the biggest things we can do around prevention is is really investing in our youth. Because if youth start off, they have positive experiences and positive development, they're less apt to start using drugs by other ways that they have helped re-waste it for risky behavior. Now, I know that's not a silver bullet, but it's one thing I think we need to look at as a community. Whether it's a youth center, what that looks like, really strongly work with the schools and other useful serving organizations. So I'll just I'm just gonna say that it's a huge issue. Not, not one sector of the community can take this on and manage it or handle it or find the solutions, but it starts right here with this conversation. That's very devastating and very hard conversations to have. And also, we have to, we have to think of addiction as a disease, just like it's like diabetes. There's treatment out there and everybody deserves treatment. A lot of conversations need to happen and you need to remove the stigma around asking for help and just talking about it. So while it's a very difficult conversation to have, I applaud you, Chairman, for bringing it up first and foremost before we start. So we're starting, we're starting by having the conversations. Lots of work to be done. Moving along to the manager's report. I think in the discussion about recycling, maybe we can get our youth involved. How about if, you know, we reach out to Granite Street School, maybe the Arts Department? Have some kids do some art, art posters or something that can be put on social media pages to encourage. Just think of other ways outside the box that include the community and this, because a lot of folks I know I've just been waiting for it to come back because they want to recycle. Perhaps they don't know about it. And the folks, it's been a while that they've had to or have had the option to recycle. So that could just be one strategy, working with our schools. Around the elevator, absolutely, we need to get the elevator in working order all the time. I know the library has an issue around, or just had their elevator repaired as well. So while I know it's an appropriate use of the funds and if we have to have it a fallback to use our local opera funds, I would be in favor of it, but I'm also in favor in helping perhaps look for other funding sources that might be appropriate because a hundred fifty to two hundred K is a huge chunk and it's almost one of our, it's just, we just get over two hundred thousand dollars. We have one more allotment coming if it hasn't already as far as our, our county opera funds, maybe in our local municipal opera funds.
Our total was in the ballpark of four forty. We have spent close to two hundred thousand.
So, yeah.
Perfectly appropriate use of it. So, you know, that this is ultimately a council decision, but if we never make a decision on it, then we never spend it.
That's right. So I just wanna offer, and I know Brittany Gruder's on the call too. She's been looking for other grants for a bunch of different things that we're working on and she worked with me for the hospital. So perhaps maybe we can at least have a conversation or a meeting about the other funding sources before we have to to the light though.
Right. As I mentioned, we have several funding sources that tip of our fingers, most, most importantly, we do have a couple of projects. One was recommended by the commissioners to apply to former commissioners to, for bills or, or to funding for one project. Those are also a great fit for that program. So it's very likely that they may see a application come from us depending on the council's discussion at our next council meeting.
Very good. Thank you. And I guess I I will just end on good news that despite the revenue sharing that we're, you know, up to forty-nine percent of what we had budgeted for this time, so I had it again. So that's good news. Thank you.
Council Danforth, Council Goalie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To also start on the issue of the drug problems in town and really nationwide. I feel the emotional part of it has definitely been said already and I certainly feel similarly to what's been discussed. As a municipality, I feel we're obviously limited, especially the size that we have and really how much we can do. I feel there's really only three areas that we have any real influence over the lived experience of those who are undergoing those types of issues, whether the individual themselves or their family. One of those is supporting our police department. And I appreciate Council Madore's comments on that. They are also at the whim of many forces beyond them. And they still, day in and day out, do the best job they possibly can to support our community. So I think supporting them back is first and foremost. I appreciate what Council Danforth shared about the youth. I feel that is a preventative measure that needs to happen. Basically, every year we don't do something for the youth is another year that we essentially allow youth to find other ways to entertain themselves or get into other issues without having any resources or support or a network of people that they can turn to, other activities. So I've been advocating for the town to have a youth center and I feel that really needs to take priority this year in terms of our focus and energy. And lastly, given the size of municipality we are, I think we need to advocate to those who do have the influence and the ability to solve these problems. That's the state, the county, the federal government, other nonprofit resources. So if we are going to go above and beyond to, which I know many of us have, if we're gonna continue going above and beyond to try and address this issue, I think we really need to, as a council, have written letters and statements that we send to the state, send to the county, send to the federal government and to any other organization that could help us and make it very clear what we are struggling with and how we need help. I think that needs to also be taken prior, taken priority. That way we can speak as one voice on behalf of the whole town. In terms of recycling, obviously that's been an issue of mine for a long time. I appreciate the idea of a sign. I feel it needs to be a little bit more forward and direct than that. Perhaps if you want lower taxes than frequently recycle, something along those lines, because I hear a lot of times how the council is raising the taxes and raising the mill rate. Well, it's a collaborative effort. So if the community does not also take steps to recycle, then we're put in a position where we have to incur higher costs because those are also out of our control. The cost of disposing of trash is incredibly expensive. And that cost will continue to rise if the community doesn't actually try and solve this, along with other issues. And we talked to public participation already tonight. So please participate and be a part of the process. Thank you to the manager on negotiating many different contracts. We voted on one of them tonight, the B line contract, but especially the court lease and keeping up on all these things that have really not been looked at in a long time. I just appreciate your attention to all of those things. Thank you to our Assistant Chief Jonathan for being interested in our town and coming here and committing to a very important role and I look forward to working with you. And with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Council Goalie. You have a council comment? Council Higgins?
Yes, Mr. Manager, I want to say thank you to you and your departments for the reports that they put out to us, very detailed, very specific. Really enjoy it. I mean, I know a lot of people think they're dry, but it's a nuts and bolts of what the town, so I want to thank all of you. As far as, because everyone's, everyone's talked about it, the the drug problem that we have in the area. I want to say that the police are doing everything that they can. I have no doubts on that. But what can we do to help? There's a lot of people that are just turning a blind eye. They see it every day. You have the councilman here on the count, on here in front of us today. They were out there at that, the encampment. They saw what was there. It's in this community. I heard Narcan. Yes, Narcan's safe, but it, and it falls onto the first responders and they're trained. And what happens when you have to issue that Narcan twice to the same person? Two different times, not that same night. So I mean, it puts a lot of pressure on them. But I think we as a town, a country, we need to stop turning the blind eye and overlooking what some of these people are doing.
Thank you, Council Higgins. Council Bragden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I wanted to bring out this change of my memory is, me and Jay a while ago had raised a concern with the DARE program and possibly putting something in its place that statistically has worked. I think it's now a time that we do start looking for programs that statistically work that we could implement into the schools. I know a lot of people say they miss DARE, but it really wasn't that great of a program. I think it's time we now start looking for a program.
Thank you, Council Bragden. Any other council comment? Council Higgins?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I want to say Council Goldie, you stole my thunder on the youth center. That was one of my things when I wanted to write the council. We need to do something for our children in this community. They hang on the monkey trail. They don't have any place to go. I mean, right now, probably two to three nights a week, you'll have a group of high schoolers that will sit at McDonald's and talk for two or three hours and just sit there. They have no place to go. What are these kids gonna do? They're gonna be going south on the monkey trail or just like we all did. The pets having a bonfire. Let's do something, I mean, the skeetle, wonderful idea. Let's have something like that with a warming shed. They like to have the bonfire, so have had something there for them to do something better. The youth in this town, that's our future. And today we want to keep, bring people in, keep, bring people in. We need to keep the people we have here too, and we want those kids to go away and come back to this town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Council Higgins, on the way to report down to the public. Be sure. So eleven through thirty Congress Street, and there is a big problem with drugs, and I just want to thank. Tom Malkony because he is a lifesaver. Responding to different aspects of my house and that, and I just want to appreciate him for doing a great job because he's on the top of it. Like I said, and uh with uh Ms. Danforth, I would uh like to try to see if the public is invited to that. Those committee meetings with the drug related on against the hospital.
Is it working now? Yeah. So um the meeting is open to the public. It's not uh, I would have to share the Zoom link. I have a Zoom link. So I could share that with you if that's something that you're interested in. We definitely want more people um to participate in that, so.
Yes, it is if I could, if you could email me.
I absolutely.
Time or whatever.
I can do that. Yeah, so I I think it's the December nineteenth or the Monday, yeah, December nineteenth at three o'clock is our is our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thanks for.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Love. I see Ms. Archie up on the Zoom camera.
Hi, Julie Archie, four seventy-three Roostick Avenue, Millanocket. Um I'd like to thank you guys for bringing up the drug problem. As most of you know, my son is one of those who passed away on November twelfth. I've said for three years, we need something for these children to do. Besides hang out at McDonald's, hang out in tractor supply parking lot. For three years, I've said that we had a problem. And I was always the first one to judge addicts. I had no idea my son was addicted. I drug tested him a week earlier. I just, as far as the DARE program goes, I am all for it and I will be a willing participant. And whatever we can get for these kids and not in middle school, they need to learn in third grade, fourth grade, eighth grade. I have video. My daughter, seventeen years old, found her brother dead in his bed. I had to go down to confirm it. I have videotapes from my security cameras of the chaos outside my house that morning. We need to do something and I know the police are doing everything that they can, but how much more can this town take? We have got to do something before vigilante justice kicks in because the police will do everything in their power, but then we have a district attorney who won't do anything. I'm willing to show the videos of my family falling apart outside if that's what it takes to keep kids off drugs. And if you know something, say something. The morning that my son passed away, when you guys are talking about doing cameras up in the park, we need them. Because that night I drove around town to all the places he liked to go, just to sit and listen to music. And I sat by the Santa House and watched a drug deal go down right in front of me that same night. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Archie. We all sympathize with you very, very much.
Yes, Council Higgins. Um thank you, Julie. I completely understand how it feels for the family. I lost my sister to the drug epidemic four years ago. Um that being said, I completely agree with all the statements that you made. I do feel like there needs to be a new program implemented in town, especially the security cameras which you brought up. Um I apologize for your loss. Um he was a friend of mine as well and I am so sorry.
Council Madore? Keep in mind, we are still down in the public, yes.
I think what we said and what you said at the very beginning. More so than anything else, and I've heard it repeated by the police department on several occasions. If you see something, say something. You can't be bystanders. You can't be afraid, cannot be dictated to by those who use intimidation. To not act, to not say something, not inform. The police department will take and they'll keep it discreet. They'll take the information to use, try to help them get a handle on us, but it needs the entirety. Cannot be sidelined or we cannot be bystanders. It's taking our joy. So I understand exactly what you're saying to Chairman. If you see something, say something, contact someone, contact EMS, contact the police, contact the hospital. Yell it out your window if you have to, any people that you care. But don't sit back and wait for someone else to do it because it's not just their problem, it's everyone's problem. And if you have children, if you have grandchildren, if you know of someone who has passed away, that should be enough of an incentive to act. A simple phone call. It doesn't take much. I'll get off my cell phone now. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Madore. Ms. Sullivan.
Sandy Sullivan, um I'm, I'm, I don't have children and so. I I question who are you going to report it to? If you see a drug deal going down or if you know someone is in trouble. Who are you, who are you going to report it to? Um, am I gonna call the police immediately and are they gonna be able to do anything? Um, I know this all sounds good. But I just question how it, how it works and granted, I'm older. But when I was growing up in this town, we did have things to do. We had a bowling alley. We had a movie theater. We had many, many activities at the school that kept us involved, not only after school, but in the evening. So that we didn't have time enough to get in trouble. Um maybe talk to the kids and see what their suggestions are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Anybody else down in the public? Back to the council. Any other comments?
Council Brighton. Just answering um Ms. Sullivan's comments, um there are hotline numbers that you can reach. You Google them. There are some down at the police station you can see as well. Uh to to get contact to those that need help. Um I also would highly recommend calling the police department. There are plenty of people there that would be willing to sit down and talk to you about those that need help. I had experienced it firsthand, helping those that that needed help and nowhere to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Brighton. I would like to now move to order number two ninety-one, twenty twenty-two. Approval of the town warrant, Council Felice here, will you please read?
Certainly. Order number two ninety-one. Dash twenty twenty, providing for extra town warrant, eleven twenty eight twenty two. It is ordered that the town warrant for another twenty twenty two with an amount of forty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents is hereby approved. Second.
Motion by Council Felice, second by Council Madore.
There it is. Uh three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and four cents for the school reprieve, maybe that's our debate please. Sixteen thousand four dollars and thirty cents, help your manufacturer, the working of public work structure and talk about. Two thousand hundred and fifty-three dollars, nineteen cents for Purple Oil Company and seven thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents for Versa Power.
Discussion by the council? Seeing none, discussion by the public. Mr. Frank, do you still have your hand up? Do you want to comment on that? Thank you. Let's take a vote on the order. Although the vote approved. Unanimous. Order number two ninety-three dash twenty twenty-two, can I please have, sorry, two ninety-two dash twenty twenty-two, Council Goldie, please read.
Yes, this is clear. Order number two ninety-two, twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of six thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents is hereby approved. Second.
Motion by Council Goldie, second by the Council Madore, any heavy hitters?
Yes, there's a eighteen seventy for seeing newcomers' sons. Uh one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollar for town in Millenocket, one thousand one hundred and five dollar for Versa Power.
Thank you, the special by the council. Seeing none down to the public. Seeing none back to a vote, although approved. Unanimous. Thank you. Order number two ninety-three dash twenty twenty-two, Council Higgins, please read.
Order two ninety-three, twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of.
Order two ninety-three, twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for an entertainment license for the Blue Ox Saloon. It is ordered that the attached application for entertainment licenses hereby approved for Thomas St. John's, sixty-one Pennant Avenue, Millenocket, EBA, the Blue Ox Saloon, sixty-one Pennant Avenue, Illinois.
Motion by Council Higgins, second by Council Felice here. Any discussion of the council? Seeing none down to the public. Back to the council, all in favor? Unanimous. Order number two ninety-four dash twenty twenty-two, Council Danforth, please read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number two ninety-four dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for a mall, Venus and spiritual liquor license to the Blue Ox Saloon. It is ordered that the attached application for a mall, Venus and Spirituous Liquor License is hereby approved for Thomas St. John's, sixty-one Pennant Avenue, John Business as the Blue Ox Saloon, sixty-one Pennant Avenue.
Motion by Council Danforth, second by Council Brighton, is the special by the council. Seeing none down to the public. Back to the vote, although approved. Unanimous. Order number two ninety-five dash twenty twenty-two, Council Goldie, please read.
Order number two ninety-five, twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of municipal release deed comments. It is ordered that a municipal release deed is approved for Sean Cummins for property located at one ninety-four Catan Avenue, Millenocket, Maine, as shown on map, U O four lot three oh four zero. As all outstanding factors, interest and fees totaling nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents have been paid as of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. It is further ordered that the town manager is authorized to execute and file all the necessary paperwork, including signing a municipal release deed to complete the sale of the property referenced in law.
Second. Motion made by Council Goldie, seconded by Council Danforth. Any discussion on the council? Seeing none down to the public. Seeing none back to the council, although in favor. Unanimous. Order number two ninety-six dash twenty twenty-two, Council Madore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number two ninety-six dash twenty twenty-two, providing for authorization to increase funding for full-time code enforcement. Where is the position of code enforcement officer for the town in Millenocket is currently a part-time position, whereas the town manager was identified as a critical need for a full-time code enforcement officer and justified through research and appropriate and competitive annual salaries of fifty thousand dollars for this position. It is ordered to Millenocket Town Council authorize this town treasurer to transfer twenty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars from the undesigned unassigned fund balance to budget line zero one one four dash zero one 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 code enforcement to cover the increased salary and related costs for this position throughout the remainder of fiscal twenty twenty-three. Now, the attached worksheet outlines the separation of code enforcement officer and custodian budget and identifies the increased need for both the remainder of the FY twenty twenty-three and impact on a full twelve-hour municipal budget, twelve months municipal budget.
Twelve hours. Motion made by Council Madore, seconded by Council Goldie. Discussion of the council. Council Madore.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh. One of the biggest things that that town in Millenocket has a problem with is uh code enforcement. We need to have somebody here full-time that can work forty hours, who can handle the position of a code enforcement officer. We've got entirely too many uh. Track sales, supposed yard sales, uh flea market salvage yards, uh all the residential neighborhoods and I could go on and on that need to be addressed and nobody in a part-time position can have that amount of time to go through all the, you know, not only the investigation, but also have the time to take them to court and try to get a judgment for the town that doesn't just get swept under the rug or or lost translation. So I believe that this is a justifiable position. I think the time is now to have it. I looked over what the manager has done and presented here. I think it's well thought out and well presented. I support this and I look forward to going ahead and bringing in a code enforcement officer from somewhere full-time that will start working on getting rid of some of the junk yards and that within the community and try to go ahead and clean up our town someplace. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Madore, Council Goldie.
I agree.
Thank you, Council Goldie, Council Brighton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh one big thing that I wanted to raise is when we went through the manager's search and we heard from citizens say that Millenocket has always been a competitive place to work in the surrounding area. This is not competitive. It needs to be raised. Um the manager has done ample research to prove that we need to to combat other towns in order to have an actual CEO that can can do all the things that are needed by Council Madore, what the length about. Um I I highly support this and I think that we will see great benefit from having a full-time code enforcement officer. This is a proof. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Brighton. Any other council? All right, I got something to say on it. Um I originally was skeptical on this one. Um so I needed to be sold on it. I think anytime that we're spending more money or not in principle, um but anytime that we're spending more money, I just want it to be really justified. And I think Millenocket will be best served by having a full-time code enforcement officer. My only request is that we get somebody that is experienced and that they hit the ground running on some of these things, so. Um with that being said, I would support this as well. So down to the public. Ms. Sullivan.
Hi, Sandy Sullivan. Um I'm a little confused. Uh do we still have the part-time code enforcement person? And we're hiring a full-time, so it would be like one and a half code enforcement people? Or do we not have the part-time person anymore?
All right, I'm going to let the town manager answer that question. Uh we, this will be one position. Um the code enforcement, the part-time code enforcement officer that we had up until recently have resigned. Uh and, you know, much to do with the impossible workload um and the uh the pressure that the job really has. Um so, you know, that being said, that is the answer to your question. I will take a moment and say that since posting this as a full-time position, I am. I am amazed at the quality of applications that we have received for this position, I feel very good. Uh, we're holding interviews on Thursday of this week, um. Uh, you know. To to the point of being competitive, um. There are a lot of part-time code enforcement officer gigs all over the state, anywhere from four hours a week to sixteen. Um, we have many code enforcement officers who work in several communities, much like our assessor does. Um, and for, and if those positions don't come with benefits, they don't come with, you know, all of the bells and whistles that are offered as full-time municipal employment. And we've been able to be attractive to that crowd of people who have the experience and. Want to work full-time for one community, so I I feel very good about it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, thank you, Sandy, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much, anybody else down in the public? Seeing none, back to the council. On order. Two ninety six, twenty twenty two, all those in favor? Unanimous. Order number two ninety seven, twenty twenty two, uh, Council Braggman.
Order number two ninety seven dash twenty twenty two, providing for re-adoption of the town council committee policies with proposed amendments, whereas. With utilization of the town council committee's assessing subjects and issues of the town's interests and proposing recommendations for the council's consideration. In council session and whereas, in an effort to create clarity, consistency, transparency and efficiency across all committee practices. Now it is therefore ordered that the Millenocket Town Council read off the attached town committee policy amendment.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion by Council Braggman, seconded by Council Madore, Council Braggman, would you speak to your?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I really don't have much to say on this, I'm. Uh, I'm happy to see that. I'm happy to see that there's one you'd like to share, um, for for every committee, I think that's appropriately needed, um, as we have previously spoken about, um. I'm very happy with your, the only thing that I personally would like to see. Is when agenda times come out, I wish it specified how, when it needed to be posted or how soon it'd be posted. I feel like that's not very clear, but other than that, I have no issues.
Thank you, any other council comments? Done, Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, it's my understanding and perhaps if somebody else here that could. Um, state whether this is correct or not, that it needs to be one week prior to the meeting, I know that's what I aim for, but each president needs to get other committees. But I too, I guess probably like clarity on that.
I was under that assumption as well, and I had a meeting that was not done that way. And was criticized for it, and I went back to doing it the way that I thought was a week and was criticized for doing it that way, it's not clear.
Any other council comments? You might talk, Council Madore? Down to the public. Seeing none, back to the council. All those in favor? Four, five, six, seven. Unanimous vote. Order number two ninety eight dash twenty twenty two, Council Palateer, would you please read? Yes, order number two ninety eight dash twenty twenty two, providing. For appointments, Millenocket Town Committee, it is ordered, Millenocket Town Council points out or extend the appointments of committee members as advised in the attached document.
Second.
Motion made by Council Palateer, seconded by Council Danforth. Council comment? Seeing none, down to. Council Golay.
Sorry about that, uh, Council Braggman, do you know when the last. The Toddin Region Broadbanding Authority Board has met?
It's been over email a lot, there has been some negotiations and uh meetings with. With people internally, it's been a lot of phone call and you know, email correspondences. They are still active.
It'd be helpful perhaps to get uh. Either yourself and or, um, I believe Kyle others is still the resident of that, we'll see.
I am under the assumption that way, yes.
If he can come and speak to kind of where we're at with that and give an update, that would be great.
Yep.
Any other council comment? Council Palateer? Yes, I'd like to offer the attached page that the Toddin Region Broadbanding Authority, which is program one hundred, should we vote here? A correction on that, I was an elected member and have not been invited to meetings, thank you. Council Golay?
Uh, the way that the board is set up is it has both members and board of directors. The town technically needs a member in case there's a tied vote or some issue like that. In which case, each community has one member representative, so that's you, um, congratulations.
Thank you.
Louis, have you been on the email correspondences at all? Okay, I will make sure that is addressed.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Palateer, Council Golay and Council. So down to the public, seeing none, discussion, no, good, a total vote, all of the favor. Unanimous vote. All right, order number two ninety nine dash twenty twenty two, option of credit card policy. Council Higgins, would you please read?
What? Order two ninety nine, twenty twenty two, providing for the adoption of a credit card policy. Whereas the town of Millenocket currently does not have a policy on the use of credit cards. And identifies the need to establish credit, a credit card policy in order to expand credit card usage. To conduct business more conveniently and efficiently, it is ordered that the town of. The Millenocket Town Council approves and adopts. The follow proposed town of Millenocket credit card policy.
Second. Motion made by Council Higgins, seconded by Council Braggman. Council Stephanie. Council Golay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and thank you to the manager for bringing this back, I think it's been since the seventies or so that the town's been able to have a credit card.
Nineties.
Nineties.
Oh, nineties, okay, what's the difference?
Yeah. What do you?
Uh, maybe the seventies didn't warrant that decision, um. I think this is great, um, as I've talked to you privately and perhaps with others around, um. I think it's it's a great opportunity to look at certain credit card benefits. Um, that could either offer cash back. Uh, or miles that could be used for um international students. Um, or other kind of programs that we could offer as incentives to staff. Um, if we spend even just a fraction of the amount of money that we do as a municipality, roughly six million dollars a year on a credit card. Um, we could have an annual drawing of um offering free vacations to. Um, employees of the town or even members of the public, there's there's an incredible amount of benefits that can be. Um, gotten from these cards, so if it is going to be used, I would hope that we can have a discussion of how we approach it, thank you.
Thank you, Council Golay, any other council discussion?
Can I respond?
Council.
I do remember talking to you about that and it was very exciting and I think it's a wonderful idea, um, the options for municipalities. Are slim, uh, it is, so in in order to do one of those programs, it would. An individual putting it on their own credit with their own social security number and, um. There's a, there's some liability involved with that, that.
Of course.
Uh, regular staff folks are are not interested taking on themselves, so, uh, I I I highly doubt that will be the option. But, uh, we are looking at municipal. Programs from Bangor Safe.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, sir, Council Golay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I I will support this, I agree that it's time to bring the credit card back after, but. Given the history of the credit card use by the municipality within the town of Millenocket previously. I would not be jumping in with both feet as far as vacations and things are concerned, just to start. I would take it a little bit, I mean, I think that the levels of use can be fine, I think that these, you know, proper ceiling done. Uh, which the manager has will be addressing in the next, in next order, uh. But I think that, uh. Let's, let's take this slow, make sure it works first. Get it going and then we can go ahead and see what other benefits we may be able to derive from it, but. I don't want this to go into the, the linked in news that we are going ahead and offering free vacations though. Because we've adopted a credit card now and everything else and, you know, have somebody go, ah, you know, so, no, let's, uh, let's take it just a little bit. Slower, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Council Golay, we've got two minutes to respond.
Um, I appreciate the delivery, Council Madore, um, just to clarify, I wasn't implying that we. Pay for a whole bunch of people's vacations with the credit card. The credit card has benefits to where every dollar you spend, you get a certain reward. My suggestion was that once a certain amount of rewards have been accumulated, no matter how big or small they are. That they could be applied towards something, towards the staff or towards some community focused thing. Um, but I appreciate the way you delivered it, although that's certainly not where I was going, thank you.
Thank you, Council Golay, Council Braggman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, the citizen saw this order and asked me a question, I felt like it was good to to bring it up here. Um, there's a lot of pass-throughs on our warrants where committees or individuals have to purchase things with their own credit cards and then be reimbursed. Um, this will eliminate a portion of that, if not most of it, um, so it it helps the paper trail as well, so everything is documented and it's written here in the municipality. Um, I s- I feel like this, this is just going to be a way better option for all the committees and all the things that are happening across the board in town.
Thank you, Council Braggman, I do appreciate that, Council Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just have a quick question, I know it talks about this scope, uh, right through the policy and just know that you, Mr. Manager, and the town treasurer will have to pull up who gets the card. Who currently, do we currently have use of the card and is it, who uses the card that we have now?
I understand the town has one credit card that has very small limit that was. Um. It was picked up years ago, um, for a specific purpose, uh, but but, uh, you know, I think, I think maybe like five hundred dollars. Uh, you know, nothing, nothing substantial and no real policy, solid.
Thank you, this is very timely, thank you.
Council Danforth, any other council comment? Down to the public. Chief Alton.
Paul Malcolm, somebody preach school street, um, I've begged for this for twenty years. Since we lost the credit. We really. Are behind the times of this stuff. We keep our petty cash for ambulance trips, that's not the way to do this stuff, this this would be so much cleaner and so much easier. Everybody, and a lot easier on me, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm. Municipal clerk, would you please?
Diana Lightman clerk, I I also agree with Tom, the petty cash drawer, this would be definitely a better paper trail, I'm not having to reimburse, um. Us for making purposes for the elections and stuff like that, that would work out great, and I've also booked my vacation.
Any other council comments? All right. I can see that I have that headline. All right, let's go to a vote, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Order number three hundred dash twenty twenty two, Council Danforth, please read.
Order number three hundred dash twenty twenty two, providing for approval to expand Visa community credit card holders. Whereas the town has a banking relationship with Bank or Savings Bank. And whereas the town has a Visa community card at the Bank or Savings Bank. And whereas there is a need to update this application to number one, consolidate credit card services under one program for all town departments. And number two, increase the number of cardholders, now therefore it is ordered. Number one, the treasurer and deputy treasurer are authorized to update the Visa community card application at Bank or Savings Bank to the town of Millenocket. Number two, the employees listed as cardholders on this application will be approved by either the town manager or the school superintendent. Number three, the town manager and the school superintendent will designate the spending limit for each cardholder for their respective employees. Number four, the aggregate credit limit for all cardholders will not exceed fifty thousand dollars. Number five, the town manager and superintendent will establish a credit card policy for their areas of responsibility, which will be approved by their respective governing body. And number six, at the time of card issue, each cardholder will be provided a copy of the appropriate approved credit card policy.
Second. Motion made by Council Danforth, seconded by Council Madore, Council Stephanie. Council Palateer. Book holders of the one percent track, but I found this one. Any other council comment? I have one question for the manager. Who sets the credit limits and, um, why was fifty thousand? Was that a choice that you had or was it something set by the bank?
We have to have some framework to it, um, so. There will be several cards housed in, you know, town and school, seven, all with varying limits, you know. Some might be five thousand, some might be one thousand, um. The point of that is that combined total credit, should they all be maxed out at one time, which will never happen. Um, that would be the total of our credit available. If the the policy states that it needs to be paid off monthly, so, you know, add up to. Interest or, so I I don't see that being.
Thank you for that answer, it was, uh, answered my question, um, so with that, go down to the public. Back to the council, all those in favor? It's like it's unanimous. And then, Council Braggman, please read order number three oh one dash twenty twenty two.
Order three oh one, twenty twenty two, providing for approval of street closures for the Millenocket Marathon, whereas the Millenocket Marathon. Is scheduled to take place on December third, twenty twenty two, and whereas the closure of Penobscot Avenue is necessary for the safety of the race, the spectators. It is ordered that the Millenocket Town Council through the street closures of Penobscot Avenue from Central Street up to Catan Avenue on Sunday, December third, twenty twenty two. Starting at six A M and ending at eight P M.
Second.
Motion made by Council Braggman, seconded by Council Danforth, discussion by the council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, this is supposed to say Saturday, not Monday. Correct, um, that's, yeah, okay. So I make a motion that we amend Sunday to Saturday.
Motion for an amendment has been made, seconded by Council Golay. Special by the council. Down to the public. Uh, that is council, all in favor? Motion for the amendment, says now Saturday. All right. So back to the, back to the council on the original motion on the order. As amended. As amended, correct, thank you. Seeing none down to the public. Back to the council for a vote, all those in favor? I'm glad to see that there's a marathon again this year, Council Madore. I haven't heard much about it lately. Order number three oh two dash twenty twenty two, Council Golay, could you please read?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number three oh two, twenty twenty two, providing for S R three grant expenditures approval. Whereas order number one twenty two, twenty twenty two, caused the funding of S R three grant expenditures and required council approval for any such expenditures during this period. And whereas the school administration is seeking approval for a Harvard mock trial training field camp. Therefore, it is ordered that the S R three expenditures of one hundred and thirty seven dollars, twenty four cents is approved for the Harvard mock trial training field trip.
Thank you, Council Golay, that's a council second, thank you, Council Danforth. Special on council, Council Golay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I know that we did have a discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know that we did have a discussion, uh, one of my last, uh, one of my last, uh, meetings chairing here, um, where I suggested that we should revisit whether or not, uh, I know Council Bragman spoke to that too, um, revisit the S R three grant and, uh, essentially work out, um, this issue to where we're not having to pass all these expenditures. Um, I know that the manager had spoken to the school about this as well, if I'm not mistaken, at some point, or I just made that up entirely. Okay, you did, okay. So we both did.
Oh, you did? Only conversation on this episode.
All right, so I didn't make anything up.
Order number one. I'm going to judge on this one.
Um, I know that when you and I spoke, um, we were also both in agreement that it's time to do that, but the issue was um, how they would fund these, um, grants. Because there was a concern about the way that it's structured for those who are new in the council or new to this issue in the public. Um, the school was awarded a significant amount of, um, S R grant funds basically for COVID, um, over a million and a half. Um, that requires, uh, that cost to be paid first, but then to be reimbursed. So obviously, there needed to be a funding mechanism in place to pay for it to then later be reimbursed, which was already approved by the state. Um, so the guaranteed reimbursement. Um, we had been fronting that cash out of our, um, undesignated funds, basically a large savings account. Um, but the issue that, you know, we spoke to before is that it's a significant amount of money to be cash flowing out of that account. Um, so the manager and I had spoke about potential solutions to how the school could carry that out. I also spoke to the bookkeeper there who had some suggestions of his own. Um, so Mr. Manager, if you were in mind, speaking to what was concluded.
Well, to what was concluded is nothing. Um, however, we are in the stages of figuring that out. Uh, in our meeting recently with superintendent and school business manager, um, we discussed this at length. We discussed the option of line of credit, um, and we discussed the option of removing barriers um, altogether and then maybe removing barriers, uh, or expanding barriers so that maybe it's a, um, you know, a, a, a larger spending limit just internally, tap that two hundred thousand dollars and revisit it as it gets reimbursed. Uh, during that conversation, I was informed that, um, the application has to be uh, rewritten, um, rewritten, so council will be working on that and submitting it. Um, and throughout that time, we will be, uh, discussing, uh, budget for that, um, grant and then, um, the best solution for. I expect that to be resolved by January, if all goes well, and, um, whatever we decide between, um, the four of us is the, you know, the best solution for, for all those four we bring into the council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Bragman, Council Bragman. Any other council discussion? Please. Council Medor.
Yeah, I, I agree with Council Goley, Council Bragman. I, I think there's, I think that the council as a whole, uh, would like to move away from having such an oversight on the S R funds. Uh, I think it was necessary at the time, given the fact that the administration has changed at the school. Uh, I think there's a, a renewed confidence and, uh, accountability over there. So I, I think that we, it's time now to go ahead and as the manager has said, either done in much larger increments so that they, they don't have to keep coming back to the council all the time, or simply releasing the S R funds and allowing the school to manage them on their own. I, I think the, the issues that we had with the previous administration of the school, I think we are not going to have. I would be very surprised if we would have those issues again. I think there'd be a much more accountability. So I would be in favor of simply, i- if it was, I, I'll, I'll, let the manager obviously come up with the best scenarios, but I would be of the fashion to go ahead and just simply release the S R funds to be managed by the school now going forward. I think the council done their due diligence on this. I think it's time to give the school an opportunity to, to manage their own funds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Medor. I'm going to have the manager speak in a moment, but just briefly, I also um, had a conversation with the manager today with, I didn't realize everybody had already spoke about this, but I expressed a concern for that as well, but it was time to look into avenues to, uh, release that back to him. Mr. Manager, would you speak on that, please?
The, the point I really want to make is that the um, the original order wasn't necessarily or entirely based around distrust. It was a concern of cash flow, uh, and the amount of cash we have on hand to, uh, to front this money to be reimbursed after it's spent. You know, that pot of funding is meant to, um, be a cushion for us to get through for, um, four months of, of payroll and bills and, and all that. So, you know, between the time when the, uh, tax bills go out, beginning of a fiscal year or whenever it's committed, between the end of the fiscal year and when the tax bills go out and start, when we start to see that revenue come in, that funding needs to be available for the town as, you know, as a business to pay our bills and to pay our employees. Um, so yes, that was the concern, cash flow.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Council Bragman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to add on, because I was going to say the same thing. Um, it, it, it wasn't necessarily administration issue, but the school did bring up that there was an issue with the state, an issue with the application and reimbursement. So it wasn't administration per se. There was a, a couple of factors that played into it. I'm including the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bragman. Any other council comment? Seeing none, down to the public. Seeing none, back to the council. Can I get a vote on order number three oh two twenty twenty-two? All in favor? Unanimous vote. All right. Reports of communication, warrant meeting for December eighth, twenty twenty-two, council meeting will be Council Bragman and Councilor Danforth. Chair committee reports. Any chair committee reports, Council Bragman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just want to point out for those that there's a little bit more people here than the last time I've had a meeting. Uh, the events committee meeting is meeting bi-weekly now. We are meeting every other week at the library at four o'clock every other Friday, unless otherwise stated. Um, this Friday, we are going to be talking about the marathon and working directly with them in the coming future and possibly taking over some roles for them to make their life a little easier. Um, on top of that, we are also going to be talking about a scholarship fund that we have been working on. Um, so there's some big things coming out of the events committee, and I would love to have more community involvement. Um, love to see you guys there. Again, we do it by Zoom and in person. Um, so if you would like to inform me, can we judge me directly? Thank you.
Council Bragman, I have a question for you. Is that a hard time that you have set, or is that just what works best for your committee?
That is what works best for the committee members.
Is it, is it, um, a council?
I would go off what committee members' needs were, that we had done, tried different things, and I was told by the members committee that that is the time that works best for them, but of course, it is adjustable based on what the majority of the members need. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Thank you very much. Two-minute public comment, where anybody can say anything that they want hypothetically. For two minutes. Down to the public.
After you've gone to the public, there's one thing before we vote.
And Council Medor.
Yeah, I just would like to recognize, uh, Commissioner Marshall to come to our council meeting. Uh, he is the new commissioner of Northstock County, and, uh, congratulations on your election. And we look forward to having you here and working with the council and the town in Millinocket. So I just wanted to thank Commissioner Marshall for showing up to the county meeting. Hometown boy, by the way.
Would you, would you say a few words? Excellent, excellent. All right, with that, negative motion, drag. Motion has been seconded. And a little vote, all of the favor. It's unanimous.